It is 5:30. We can call the regular meeting of the February Board of Intergovernmental Ambrose Executive Village Committee by standing and pledging the flag, which is right over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the board.
Mr. Engel.
President.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Dr. Messer.
And Mrs. Wackel.
Here.
I entertain a motion for item four, which would be the recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented, including any addendums you may receive today.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing your seat, none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackel.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. Motion passes. Item five on the agenda this evening would be presentations. Michael?
Yeah. Start with Mr. Watts, who's on the board.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Watts is choir director at high school and I'm here to, with some students, to present a thank you. Our students in the choir program and students in the theater program wanted to take the time to handwrite some thank yous to all of you for your efforts and the recent allocation of funds to the improvements of the performing arts facilities. And so they're here to present those and share a few words for you. Come on.
Hello. My name is Mary Jessica. I'm a junior at Amherst School High School.
Hello. I'm Cheyenne. I am also a junior at Amherst High School. I'm also the president of our theater company.
I'm Caitlin Banyas and I'm a sophomore at Amherst.
We're all members of the concert choir program and the theater program at the high school. And we just wanted to come in and personally say thank you for the allocated funds towards the fine arts program. We have dedicated so much time and hard work through the plays and the musicals and all of our concerts. And it really, the funding allows us to have even greater performances. Our tech gains hands-on experience with state-of-the-art equipment, which is amazing. And for the concerts, we have brand-new risers, which we will be able to use at our concert one week from today, which is very exciting. And we personally have, we, these risers have been, our current risers have been through many, many years of concerts. So we're personally very excited to get to perform on brand-new industry-standard risers. And here we have some big names.
So most of them are generic. There are a few that you will see that aren't specified to a particular person, but they want to present all of these cards to you tonight.
Sure. Just hand them over.
Excuse me. I'll be quick. I hope that's you.
Thank you. Like Christmas.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the young ladies?
Questions, but thank you. That obviously took a lot of time.
Thank you.
I would use more.
And I believe we have another presentation this evening?
Yes, and Mr. Gibson's here to talk a little bit about the junior high and share some things about what's happening.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Everybody, welcome to the junior high. On behalf of our staff and Mrs. Lawson and Mr. Brown, we're excited to have the board meeting here. Feel free to continue to do this once a year. We don't mind setting it up one time.
Once a year.
Once a year. We have that in the notes. Now, we're really excited to have you here today. We have a couple of different things to talk about that we're excited about. First, I'd like to have Ms. McKee come up. She is our orchestra instructor here at the junior high. I was telling her when we were talking about this that I don't do a good enough job and I don't know if I can, because she's so amazing, of talking about what an impact she has on kids and how much she's grown this program in a short amount of time. And she is just incredible, growing the numbers, engaging kids. When you hear the students that she asked to come play for you tonight play, I feel like you're gonna feel it in your heart, the way we do at the concerts. Like, she's remarkable. And we're so lucky to have her. We pulled her up from, originally Dayton, right? Originally from the Dayton area. She's like, "I love Amherst. I wanna come here." So we're excited to have her. And she's gonna introduce her students and have them play a piece.
Yeah. So recently, on Saturday, we had solo ensemble for Lorain County. And so there were all kinds of schools from around the districts that got to perform. And these three boys, this is Cameron Gilboy, plays violin in seventh-grade orchestra. They're all in seventh grade. Crosby Hardy, who is an amazing percussionist, but he also just recently switched to cello. So he's been playing for like less than a year. And he also got to play in solo ensemble. All three of the boys got to play a solo. And then they all also got to play an ensemble together. And then we have Jason Corey back here. He plays bass. He switched from cello to bass this year. So we have a lot of, you know, interested kids that are switching around different instruments and stuff. They wanted to play a little bit for you today, but they played at solo ensemble. So I'll take, I'll let you guys take it from here.
I've never been in a school district that had an orchestra before I came here. And I'm telling you, it's just, no offense, Mr. Barbero, it's incredible. I just, I love it. And to watch kids this age play these instruments, I think, is remarkable. So, gentlemen, thank you very much. And Ms. McKee, also, I want to make you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mrs. Lawson, our dean of students, and Mr. Brown, our assistant
principal. And they're gonna go over a couple of things with our PBIS program, which unfortunately, Mrs. Lawson was at Powers today. Josh Priest from the ESC came out to actually officially give us our bronze award, which is the only award we could get. Mr. Brown let him know that he'd be bringing back a silver award next year, which is the only award we could get next year, and gold the year after that. But they're gonna talk to you about some things we're doing here at the junior high.
Sure. So, I'm Rebecca Lawson, dean of students here at the junior high and also at Powers.
I'm John Brown, the assistant principal here at the junior high.
Excellent. So this year, one of the things we've worked hard at is kind of rebranding the PBIS. So PBIS actually stands for Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports. So with that, we've really worked to develop clear expectations for our students, making sure that they're explicitly taught what's expected of them. And then those things would be addressed during our morning meetings that happen daily for our students. The nice thing that we did is we kind of gave our students ownership over this. So they worked in groups during morning meeting to develop the matrices for those expectations. And then, very nice, we were able to utilize some of the technology tools we have within the school and within their design class with Mr. Portaleski. Our students printed our signs. You'll get to see a poster. We had Mrs. Mellon helped with those a little bit to pretty those up for us. That's definitely her traits. So that's been nice, we've been able to utilize the different resources for that. The nice thing about our PBIS is that it is supported by all staff. So whether that's in the lunchroom or recess monitors, buses, teachers, all staff have access to our PBIS for our students and positive supports. And then we do have a staff team that does review data, kind of look at what interventions we can provide to our students. Of course, just like anything, we have students that may need additional support at times. And so in looking at that data, we've developed a check-in, check-out system that Mr. Brown will talk a little bit more about later. And then we do have a student team, which some of our students are here today, that they're gonna get to share a little bit more. And we also do have parent volunteers that are part of our team as well. So we've really worked hard at rebranding that. So if I can invite up our students. So go ahead and introduce yourselves.
I'm Anna Fock.
And my name is Alana Cherry.
My name's Delia.
Delia? Perfect. So we have our student team. So these are a few of our students that do represent the student body. And so they're gonna talk a little bit about what we do in our comment three expectations.
Okay, so the comment three, being respectful, responsible, and kind helps all the students not only... encourages the students to behave though.
So how is that different from previous years, the comment three?
Last year, we had, I think it was called comments. It was a lot of different words to describe how we were supposed to act, no idea what any of them meant. So this year, I think we made it smaller so we can remember it easier.
Award, expectation in the classroom, we never let the students like run around or talk during class, so we can always listen to what's happening. And on the bus, we don't let the students stand up, so we can like have a safer environment. We also don't let the students, when they're screaming, it can cause alarm to other students, but also the bus driver, and they can lose focus.
Perfect. And so then, these are the posters that we were talking about that were created in design class. And then also with Mrs. Mellon helped us with those as well. So the students created these matrices, and then they were created into the posters. And they do hang in each of those areas. The bus drivers were also given those expectations as well.
We have PBIS awards for the students who collect their points and are good behaved during school. We have a store every Friday at lunch periods for things they can buy for PBIS points. They can buy passes for, to wear, to redeem during this one school day. Food, toys, and candies in the PBIS store as well.
So what's one of the things that you've purchased at the store that you love?
I have actually not purchased anything.
Your blanket, okay. Nothing for our teachers either?
I've actually bought a, so I have, for ELA, I have Misses Riggs, and she has this store. And the store consists of a lot of things. One of the things I have bought is a little pass for the candy. And another thing I have bought is this lottery ticket. You scratch it off and it gives you like one thing, maybe a pass, a free ticket to locker during class if you forgot something. I got this one item from the box of mystery, and I picked one item from this box that has a bunch of things in it.
It's my kind of prize. I like that. Not sure what you're gonna get there. What's one of the things that you've purchased that you're...
I don't buy from the school store, but I always buy donuts from my ELA teacher. I think that PBIS rewards are like a great addition to our school, 'cause they're always encouraging the students to like behave and follow the comment three.
I bought different candies, of course. And there's been passes that I bought, like some teachers offer like two extra credit points on tests, which are very beneficial. So I bought a couple of those.
And then the nice thing is our students do help with the store. It's volunteer, if they want to or not, but they can help at the store as well.
Okay, so sometimes, if you behave correctly, there's different ways you can enter raffle, but some of the prizes are candy baskets. You could win an Amherst cinema movie tickets or a free come work certificate. Now, some of the events that we have, we had a movie event earlier in the year, and we are currently planning a dodgeball event. I think it's five girls and five boys in each team. And if whoever wins during the lunch period can get an award.
And then we're planning our next big event for the end of this school year. And the students help with that. So we gather their information, kind of get their input on what sorts of rewards and prizes they would like and events that they would like.
Okay, so we really wanted to help the teachers, 'cause they do a lot. So we decided to make posters that can scan a QR code, which goes to a Google forms. Whenever a student sees a teacher being kind or doing something that really helps a student in an outstanding way, they can fill out a form and hook up the teacher and they get raffled out. The teacher wins a free lunch.
Very exciting. And the students help to hang the posters, so it's one of the things that they want to do. And then, Mr. Brown?
So one of the things with PBIS, it's all about the positive behaviors, but in recognizing those positive behaviors through the things like the raffles and the weekly stores. But we all know there's going to be students that need a little bit more support than just recognizing when they do the right thing. So using the referral data that we had, the teacher team of our PBIS team identified 55 students that needed a little bit extra attention and support. The tier one students are the ones that just, they had a handful of referrals that were starting to kind of show like, hey, they need a little extra attention. The tier two students were, they need checked in on two to three times a week. And then the tier three students were just pretty much daily. We put the list out there of all the students and shared it with the staff and said, "Hey, would you be willing to be this child mentor, their check-in, check-out person?" It was probably like, what, two days? All 55 students were picked up. Some staff members, and I say staff, because this wasn't just teachers. We have ed monitors, we have parapros, all picked up a student. And they add little notes every time they meet with them, they set goals. The amount of students that are already accomplishing their goals has been amazing. I think what made me the happiest was seeing how quickly staff members grabbed these kids and said, "I will mentor them." It has, for these students, who are our top students who are referred the most, it has had a significant impact on reducing referrals with these kids. There is one boy who sits outside my office every morning, first period. One of our educational monitors chose him. This boy could not go two days in a row without getting a referral from someone. Last week, what was it, 11? He made it 11 days in a row without getting a referral. So like, to say that she's had an impact on him is an extreme understatement. One of the things that we shared with the teachers, and I don't like the name, but it's called a forced choice survey. And it's basically kind of a would-you-rather survey. And it was about 55 questions that the staff member asked, met with the kid, and they went through the forced choice survey. And at the end, it identified what motivates that kid. And yes, some kids scored high on like physical rewards, a candy bar, a donut. Most of the students, their number-one motivating factor was positive adult interaction. Mrs. Lawson has one student that he wanted a positive phone call home. So after so many days, she called both parents and made a positive phone call home. Didn't cost us anything, and it meant the world to that kid. The kid that sits outside my office every first period, what he wanted, and we set daily goals for him at the beginning, he wanted to go outside for five minutes. So if he met his goal, his staff member that picked him up, she lets him go out, he goes out and stands by the flagpole. He just wants five minutes alone, and he wants that time with that positive adult. So that's been our check-in, check-out. We have a lot of students that are gonna be kind of stepped down from tier three to tier two, from tier two to one, and from one to just maybe a monthly check-in. But I think we're pretty happy with the results of your guidance so far.
So we do have our previous members of our student team here today. But as I mentioned, the team does help us with different planning events, giving ideas, helping to support things around the building, putting up posters, helping with the store. Ladies have been great. And our other team members are here as well. So if you could help me to thank our student team for all the work that they do and also for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies, and thank you, Mrs. Lawson and Mr. Brown. I think the coolest thing, and sometimes it just happens, right? It works together. And Mr. Brown and I were laughing, 'cause he's like, "Oh, man, you really planned that out well." In January, when Mrs. Simonson, who was our wellness person, do a presentation to our staff about students who struggle with behavior in school. And she talked about how the research shows basically that these students are looking for the reaction that they are now conditioned to receive from adults in school. And so she came in and she gave us some strategies, how to work with these kids, how to connect them, different things like that. And then we have the forced choice surveys that go out. And of course, last month at our staff meeting, we shared those results with the entire staff, just doubling down on what Mrs. Simonson had told us, like, here's the research, and now here is us working with 50-some students. And it's telling us the exact same thing, like, they're looking for that negative interaction, but all they want is that positive interaction. It's all that they want. And it's so cool. It's just, it's, I think, when you get into education, you do it for the kids. And it's really cool to see, this has also changed some adults in our building, too, in the best way, like really making them excited and happy and giving them another purpose. So it's been really cool. Finally, tonight, and I don't want to take up all of your time, 'cause I know you have a lot of important things to do, we have Mr. Barbero here. So, Mr. Barbero, if you'd come on up. Mr. Barbero, tell me, if I'm right, 34 years in education, 33 leading the marching comments, 32 at Amherst.
That's correct.
Right? And you have about 30 hours left of work. Is that about right? Right? That's about right, isn't it? That's about right, right? So, Mr. Barbero is leaving us on Friday, unfortunately, after 33 years dedicated to the marching comments and 32 years dedicated to the Amherst schools and really impacting thousands of lives.
Thank you.
Thousands of lives. So we wanted to bring him here tonight and just say thank you, best of luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have a speech? I didn't tell you to prepare one. I'm gonna put you out of style.
No, I mean, it's been great. You know, in the 90s, when I first came here, underneath the Amherst symbol, it said, "A great place to learn," it said, "A great place to live," but it also said, "A great place to work." And somewhere in the 2000s, that got taken off, and it was just a great place to live and a great place to work. I think we are on the track of getting back to a great place to work. You know, and as I'm sitting here looking at all you, I've touched the lives of everybody here, and you've touched my life just as much, with three kids, working with mom, right? Your son played percussion in the 90s, right? Right? Your husband, I mean, we still tell the story of, "Don't go parachuting the day after band camp."
He jumped out of a plane and everything.
No, focus. Out for the season. The plane was working.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, there you go. Guess what Barbero said at the board meeting? But you guys are riding the right track. And it's almost sad that I'm leaving, because I think we are on that slope. I tell my youngins in my department that, you know, things are like a roller coaster. They go up and down, and the people that make it for 33 years, when it's, the roller coaster's down at the bottom, you stay on to that next hill to go up. And that's basically been the secret. So keep doing what you're doing. You guys have the community involved in doing everything right, and I see good things happening here at Amherst. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, thank you so much for your time and your patience and your attention, and for allowing us to showcase some of the really cool stuff that our staff is working on here at the junior high. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Gibson?
All right. Thank you very much.
Students, parents, if you'd like to leave, feel free. I know the board's very excited to have the number of people at the meeting tonight, but I know you have busy times as well, so if you'd like to take off.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.
I'm Ms. Watts.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Good to see you. Thank you.
Say bye, everybody.
Bye. Have a great evening.
You can make everybody clap now.
I can.
You can. Okay. Okay, item six on the agenda this evening would be hearing of the public. No one has signed up to address us this evening, so we would go on to item number seven, which would be the treasures we built.
Yes, you can go forward, please. And this evening, I am going to very graciously give my private report to Mr. Taylor, our construction manager at Risk, and they are going to go through a review of the guaranteed maximum price agreement three for the athletics project upgrades. And it's Matt Collier and Ian McCetty, right? The interim.
Good afternoon, everyone. So as we've done in the past, the other two GMP meetings, we're just here to review this. GMP threes for the athletic facility upgrades. Happy to report, too, you know, we were able to come with a budget on the project as we bid this out to our contractors. A lot of unique opportunities, working with our subcontractors as well, to work through getting some of the upgrades and items like that, and alternates as part of this package as well. So I think it worked out really well.
So from an overall standpoint, this athletics project that we're bidding right now is basically the redo of your football stadium. It's your new turf, your athletic stadium. Let me rephrase that. So it's your new turf, it's a new track, new bleachers. We had done in GMP one, or the bleachers home cycle, and this GMP, we were able to grab the bleachers on the visitor's side as well. It's new field events, new tennis courts, new pickleball courts, and it's, you know, the bidding process allowed us to grab most of the alternates as well and still remain under budget. So again, it's very, it's been a great exercise. And so I think Amherst is gonna have a lot of nice things to show athletically, you know, the bands using it, everything in the future here to come. So we have that in front of you. There are multiple exhibits in there. We don't intend to go through all of them. It's the same exercise. Again, we have vetted this process very well with Mike and Amy and the leadership team. We're happy to answer any questions. You know, like I said, we were able to go get a turf upgrade, 'cause we had some money left. We were able to do a full-depth track replacement of all the asphalt and the track surfacing on there. Again, the unique opportunity that we didn't think was gonna exist when we started this process, but again, through some diligence on the team and the project, we were able to kind of get it all and get it under budget. So that's really what we have. You know, so again, we're happy to answer any questions. I know you've just, it's just been handed to you. It's all the same, a lot of the same information we've been through on the prior ones with how this works and so forth. So there's a lot of pages and stuff there. Yes?
And then the main, it's a secondary laydown and it's over by like the old transportation department. What is that?
Just an area as we get materials, if we need to put anything over there. I was a little concerned with how tight the location is, so if we get bleachers maybe coming in earlier or something like that, we gotta spot a little hole up there.
Right.
Because the site's very condensed, and I thought that would be kind of out of the way over there.
You're really looking at what is it, what we're referring to as a utilization plan. That's how we're gonna impact and how to utilize the site. Obviously, we've got a lot of work to do out there. We're gonna coexist a little bit while you're at school. We're gonna do a lot of work this summer, so there's gonna be a lot of moving parts and a lot of stuff happening.
and alternates as part of this package as well. So I think it worked out really well.
So from an overall standpoint, this athletics project that we're bidding right now is basically the redo of your football stadium. It's your athletic stadium. Rephrase that. So it's your new turf, it's a new track, new bleachers. We had done in GMP one, or the bleachers home site, but in this GMP, we were able to grab the bleachers on the visitor's side as well. It's new field events, new tennis courts, new pickleball courts. And as Amy said, you know, the bidding process allowed us to grab most of the alternates as well and still remain under budget. So again, it's very, it's been a great exercise. And so I think Amherst is going to have a lot of nice things to show athletically, and you know, the bands using it, everything in the future here to come. So we have that in front of you, there are multiple exhibits in there. We don't intend to go through all of them, it's the same exercise again. We have vetted this process very well with Mike and Amy and the leadership team. We're happy to answer any questions. You know, like I said, we were able to go get a turf upgrade because we had some money left. We were able to do a full-depth track replacement of all the asphalt and the track surfacing on there. Again, the unique opportunity though, that we didn't think was going to exist when we started this process, but again, through some diligence on the team and the project, we were able to kind of get it all and get it under budget. So that's really what we have. You know, so again, we're happy to answer any question. I know you've just, it's just been handed to you, it's all the same. A lot of the same information we've went through on the prior ones with how this works. So there's a lot of pages and stuff there. Yes?
And then the main, it says secondary laydown and it's over by like the old transportation department. What is that?
Just an area as we get materials, if we need to put anything over there. I was a little concerned with how tight the location is. So if we get bleachers, maybe coming in earlier or something like that, we've got to spot where to put them.
Right.
Because the site's very condensed, and I thought that would be kind of out of the way.
You're really looking at what is it, what we're referring to as a utilization plan. That's how we're going to impact and how to utilize the site. Obviously, we've got a lot of work to do out there. We're going to coexist a little bit while you're at school. We're going to do a lot of work this summer. So there's going to be a lot of moving parts and a lot of stuff happening out there. Really starting in, potentially here in a couple of weeks in mid-March, as quick as we can get started, and then running us up through, you know, the end of August.
And do we really think that the timeline that you outlined will be realistically met?
As long as Mother Nature cooperates, I think we've got a really good chance of getting stuff done. We've got, we've been through a lot of exercises with our contractors looking at schedule and timing and when we order and all that. And we've got all the pieces, parts right. You know, if something outside of our control happens, or Mother Nature happens, that's really all we see at this point. Again, there's a lot of stuff to do, but we're, we think we can do it, and we're up for the challenge.
Right now, we're prepared to hand everything over right after Comic Relays on April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, I think. And Casey Wolf, our athletic director, has made different arrangements for track practice and things like that. So we have that full access to the stadium. Also, our first home football game, our first game of the year actually next season is a home game, and we have two away games. So Mr. Wolf is also preparing for the situation where if it's not quite ready for the first game, we have an alternate plan going, which gives us like actually like three more weeks until the next home game. So that's kind of a backup, Mr. Wolf, in case whether, there are weather issues or something else comes up.
And so we think, you know, we've got some underground storage for water detention, stormwater detention that we're going to do. We're going to start in the vision, and that's the work we're going to start on, where we're going to coexist with the school and the track athletes for, you know, the month of potentially March and April. And then come the end, April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, whatever that date is, that's really when we're going to go gangbusters on, you know, ripping up the field, taking out bleachers. You know, we're going to start tennis courts and pickleball courts potentially in that late March, early April timeframe as well.
Well, if you're going to do those tennis courts, what's the spring tennis court going to be? Where are you going to play tennis?
Lakeview Park.
Yeah, that's right.
I didn't remember seeing that anywhere because I didn't.
They talked about it at the facility.
Because there would be a set of folks that would be playing tennis all spring. Spring semester. Okay? Any other questions?
So the retention, is that going to be underground or is that going to be?
Underground.
It is going to be underground? What's the lifespan of that?
That's a great question. Forever, as far as I know. And it's polyethylene pipe, you know, so it isn't going to rot or deteriorate. It doesn't, you know, deteriorate.
I just did a little bit of concrete or?
No, it's polyethylene pipe and plastic pipe and other materials.
And that was an alternate that came in very favorable.
Which, please, the next question, what are the alternates that we are now going to do? That were, I know the bleachers were alternates that we did. So what, I think I'm looking at the right one.
So exhibit K, near the back of the thing, is the alternate subject accepted. Alternate one is, so we don't have a hundred percent drawing jet on your grant entry, your ticket booth and your archway is going to be, but there are some concrete things that are in there that will need to be done in advance of that happening. So that's what alternate one is, it's some concrete sidewalk changes, it's some masonry repairs and such that we're bid as part of the base bid. We will have another package, we will bid here probably within the next month to do that, what we'll call my grant entry, the ticket booth and such. And that's not encapsulated in here yet, just as a further piece. Then the alternate two was the, a concrete pattern, which we didn't elect to do because the concrete pipe that's there just needs to be increased in size a little bit, but it's still in range. Alternate three was the additional pickleball courts. So if I, when I go from memory here, I believe there were two, and we will now have three. Four, four pickleball courts. So when we thought we had some potential budget issues, we talked as a group and some of the things that were offered was potentially reducing the number of tennis courts and reducing the number of pickleball courts. So we did that, we bid as an order, identified where the dollars were, but we were still able to go back out and get those additional pickleball courts two and additional tennis court one. So you have six tennis courts and four pickleball courts now. That's where we won that. Underground, alternate, so I talked about three and four kind of together. Alternate five is that underground detention system that we're talking about. So instead of seeing a monstrous hole in the ground with a fence around it, and now it's all underground, it'll get the grass, nothing growing on it, that just will look like a field.
And there's no maintenance to that?
No maintenance. There's some clean-out ports that need to be done to make sure that salt doesn't blow up the whackit, but that's a, you know, that's just a regular maintenance and not anything like specific change in pipes or anything like that.
Can you say where the maintenance is, are maintenance people?
That will ultimately be here maintaining stuff and a lot. It's just like cleaning out a pipe, you know, making sure it doesn't get blocked up, making sure, you know, there's like test ports, you climb down and look and make sure that nothing's blocking. Alternate six was identified but didn't actually exist, so you'll see it doesn't exist on here. And then alternate seven was a turf upgrade on your actual playing surface turf. To put it more in line, I believe with, I'm going to go from memory, seven of your other eight conference people to match the fields that they have in the tour. To get it, it added some safety things with some of the GMAX testing and stuff, so that was one of the things why Mr., you know, elected to proceed with that.
Yeah, real quick, so the base bid was a two-tier system underneath the turf, which is like your sand rubber combination, whatever one's playing, all right? So the upgrade, the only difference between that and the upgrade, the upgrade is a three-tier system, which was what we were talking about when the board looked at the safety with Jimmer's, Dr. La. Yeah, so, so that, so, yeah, we were very pleased that we could fit in the, it's not the full, there's another upgrade, but that'd be better than some NFL stadiums. We didn't need that upgrade, but we needed the one, we wanted to make sure we got the one that was the safest one, that is with the rest of our conference and U5 Ohio State. So that ended up as a part of the board for the safety. So the difference is not like a nicer turf or a different, it's really what's underneath the turf. That's the difference in the cost, which probably is the amount, extra cost of all the material underneath, the rubber and sands.
So is this the one with, is this the padded one? Or is this, I know there was, there was pad or no pad, but you?
No, pad, three layers of infill, which again takes it up another notch, my machines say.
Without pads.
Correct. Without a pad.
You have two more years of warranty with this one as well.
Two more, so your standard would be an eight-year warranty. This product carries a ten-year warranty. Fully, I think, non-pro rated four warranty, I think's how they word that.
Can you go back to the alternate one?
Yep.
I didn't understand everything that you said as far, you had to go back and do something, but what's the accepted meaning?
So ultimately, you will have, when you approach your stadium, you will have a nice ticket booth and some masonry repairs and some decorative items that are in a nice, for better terms, sign that will go there. That work is coming, has not been bid yet. There were some things necessary to be done in this package, knowing that that was coming. So that's what's in alternate one, the concrete integrating had to be reworked at that area. There were some decorative fence changes, instead of a regular chain link fence, it's an aluminum picket fence to give it a little bit of a, you know, better look. So that work was captured now. There will be a second piece to bid later, which is for the actual ticket booth structure, the lighting that adds with it, and then the gates and so forth that come with them as well.
I have a question about additional lighting, and this is, keep in mind, I don't want to say anything about any of this. If we do add, is there appropriate lighting now? And if we had to add it in the future, does that mess with everything we just did? No? Okay.
She's right. No, I should remark to my chair. Your chair would be like.
It wouldn't.
Yeah, so we're not.
And we've also asked that they make sure that there's additional conduits and stuff running beneath the field, so that everything is out of the light poles when we decide to do the lighting. And that would be a very minimal disruption in the future.
Well, we do, we put new wires, so we feed the lights and stuff out of there and conduits, as Amy has said, to allow that to happen in the future if necessary.
I don't want to sound ignorant here, but how do we get to the GMP when we're still fitting other things? I mean, with the money that we've allocated for this project, how are we, how are we getting to that, know that end figure when we don't have all the bids in?
Same way we've done the other two GMPs. So we started with a big pile of money and we're biting off little pieces at a time. So GMP one was for the home site bleachers, because we had to get those ordered in time to get those here for summer. So again, we knew we had a round figure, you know, nineteen or twenty million dollars to do all the work. So we went, based upon the estimates and stuff we were carrying, we knew with those home site, we bid out the apple of notes. And then we did transportation as GMP two. Again, based upon the budget that we worked very closely with the team on and ourselves to know that, hey, the transportation building was roughly, I don't even know that exactly, I think it's right around eleven million dollars of that. So again, it was tracking, we had a higher number we were estimating. So when we knew that came in, that put us in a favorable spot. Such with this one too, we were carrying a number of about six point five million. This is coming at five point seven with all the alternates. So again, we're always heading in the right direction. It leaves us a surplus left in that budget, not using any additional interest money or anything like that in the original budget we've established. We still have dollars left, which then will be used to go get that last entryway piece. And we think the dollars that are left there are more than ample to do what we've seen so far for that.
So the money that we have, including the tan, is more than enough?
More than.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And so we discussed with C.T. Tanner how we want to handle the final pieces, which is really the ticket building and any grant entrance, whatever you want to call it. We can either do that via another GMP, GMP number four, or through a change order process. It's kind of up to us, but it's.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent right. Just, it's semantic, you know, exercise. They both get you to the exact same place, it's just whichever one we, you guys really deem necessary.
What more do we discuss then? He's asking about with the location of the tennis courts.
Well, with an hour tennis courts, pickleball courts, high school's still the most important place for it, but that's something we could still, I think, explore as far as the future. If we're thinking about having maybe two or three tennis courts over here or a pickleball court or two, which is, the footprint for the six tennis courts and the four pickle courts would be two large to have over here.
Too large over there?
Yeah, yeah. But again, I think we'd be willing to explore, looking at, just again, would be no harm in looking at what would two tennis courts, two pickleball courts here look like cost, so the board could take a look at it. In case, by miracle, there were extra dollars, and that's something the board wanted to do, we could take a look at it, but that'd be a good option. Maybe that's okay with the board.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, you have some recommendations?
Well, I want to go over the recap really quickly that you see most every month. We received fewer dollars in January twenty-five than we did in January of twenty-four. You'll see on the first line up at the top in the middle, four hundred and forty-seven thousand eight eighteen, we received our first advance in January of last year. We received our first advance for the first half collection in February. So you'll see it next month. And I would just say that so far, the collections look pretty good. We received about one point three million in the first advance and about six point five million in the second advance. We'll see if the settlement, which we should be getting in one to two weeks, is good. We should be, we should realize the inside knowledge growth at that point when we see the final settlement sheets and such. So from a year-to-date standpoint, we've received twenty-one million seventy-seven thousand dollars. Last year, at this time, we received twenty-nine, twenty-one million four sixty. And again, that's the first advance from January twenty-four that we received. From an expenditure standpoint, let's just look down at the bottom right. We spent twenty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars as of the end of January. Last year, we spent twenty-five million two sixty-seven. So spending, the rate of spending has definitely picked up. And this is our low point in cash right now, which is normal. This is always our low point in cash. And we ended January with twelve point one million in the general fund and emergency levy fund, oh sixteen. And then before we move on to recommendations, Mike and I have had our, Mr. Rollmark and I have had our eyes on what's going on down in Columbus, and I know Dr. Master has one as well. And we, of course, were supposed to have a presentation on saving by vouchers hurt Ohio, right? Eric?
Resnick.
Resnick. And it was a perfect time to talk about budgetary movement, I guess we'll call it. I guess at this point, it's February, there's no sense in getting ourselves in an uproar about what potentially looks like is happening to state funding. It's decreasing. I feel certain that it's going to end up decreasing. But what makes it so difficult to track from the governor's executive budget that was submitted in the first week of February, there's already a House Bill ninety-six, a House version of the budget in response to the executive budget. And everything at this point is a moving target. It does appear as though funding is cut, and I will say advocacy, and we will talk more about this next month. It is not right to think that it is not our responsibility to advocate. We must, all of us, that's every employee, every board member, every administrator, advocate for public education. And nobody in Columbus will know that we're unhappy unless we make sure they know that we're unhappy about what's potentially going to happen about funding. So I think Dr. Master's going to talk a little bit more about that when it comes to her update. But I just, again, advocacy is really important. And here's the bad part about it, advocacy is time-consuming. That means you have to read, and that means you have to digest the simulation spreadsheets. And it means you have to understand what the district's story is. That's something that they talk about a lot, isn't it? It's knowing what our community, our school district's story is, and what makes us unique. It takes a lot of time, but I can't help but think that it only has a good benefit. Right? In the end, the end result is definitely that we have advocated, we've been made heard. Even if we don't get what we want, which is probably what's going to happen, we need to make sure that each and every one of us are heard and we're advocating for the district, we're advocating for the students, we're advocating for the staff altogether. So I'll get off the pious soapbox now. And Mr. President, if you'd like me to go on recommendations, I will.
Do you have any questions for Amy before we move to recommendations on the monthly up-to-date revenue expense and revenue that she shared with us? If no one has any questions, then we would move to the recommendations.
Okay. Item A is for the board to approve the board minutes from the January twenty-seventh regular board meeting. Item B are the January twenty-twenty-five financials. And what you all will see there is a bank reconciliation, a financial summary by Fund and Special Cost Center, the forecast, reports for general fund and bond money, which are both compiled in the five-year forecast. And then the checklisting of fully electronic and hard accounts payable checks for the prior month. Item C, we have revision of appropriations this evening for Arc Esser, and that's increasing sixty-one thousand dollars. Now, I have reported at previous meetings that we have completely spent, Arc Esser, two point six million dollars that we received for, that was the Esser three. And then I did also want to bring to the attention of the board, we have a new fund that I have created for band, and that is for the purpose of collecting fundraising monies with the initiative of new band uniforms at some point in the next, how long, Mr. Rollmark?
Probably twenty-six, twenty cents.
So that would be a three hundred district-managed fund that we would receive any donations from the band who's. from the band members for the purpose solely of new uniforms. And then we have a then and now for our House School Boards Association, and then we have donations.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the board's recommendations A through E. Is there a discussion on any of those items that she has presented?
I do want to highlight the one donation from Charlie Farlowe, who is a student of that's twenty twenty two. I just love that she donated fifteen dollars to pay off an elementary school kid's lunch as part of her twenty first birthday. She's been so cute.
Twenty minutes.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels?
Hi.
Dr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Zappa?
Hi.
Mr. Engel?
Hi. So we would move to the superintendent's report, Mr. Molnar?
Yeah, so this evening, with so many wonderful reports from A.J.A.H. and C.T. Tanner, we were going to have another one, and that was going to be Eric Resnick from the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Safe School Funding. Well, I kind of texted the board for the meeting, he had some car troubles and was not going to make it. So he is interested in coming in the March meeting, the board's interested in having him come, so I gave him the date and then we could do that. So Sarah and I were giving all of our time to Mr. Resnick. He's not here, so the audience might be pleased if we didn't have a back for meeting.
Our time is short.
But I did have a couple of things to share anyway. Again, we have a couple of different great things happening for Black History Month. One of them was, we just found out this weekend that we had some winners in the MLKA contest, we have some rights commission posts every year. When I look back, there are only like one or two winners per grade level, and then there's only one multimedia winner. So I think in the entire state, there's only thirteen total winners. So for our, I think maybe twelve winners, with Sophia from high school, these are all tenth graders. And then the only multimedia winner in the state was our combo there of Noah and Hayley. So they did a good job and looking forward to, eventually they will post the winning art in the multimedia eventually, but again, this just happened this weekend, so we're excited about that. I think they might be going out in Columbus also, so. I believe this was all done through the Smarties class at the high school. I'm not sure which one, but again, these are all tenth graders, so congratulations to those. Also, just want to highlight again, this was in the last newsletter, community newsletter, we had Tony Morris MSA contest here. And when I look back at the previous winners, if I'm not mistaken, they always have three winners from Tony Morris Elementary School, right? And then three overall winners from anywhere. And so this year from A.J.A.H., we had, we swept all first, second, third place from our students, so that was really awesome, really awesome news, so good job. And then, if you weren't aware, last night, the Royals won state champions again, back to back, two years in a row. So just what an awesome season. I think they ended with six, they were undefeated in all the competitions they went to in the state, they were like six first place, three of those times were grand champions. They should have, well, I found a story about their national trip to Florida. They really should have been in the finals, but you know how things go sometimes, how things go. I was pretty ignorant about that, but they were penalized actually because at the beginning of the program, they announced whether to do an offensive, defensive shift. You know, but down at ESPN, it's Disney, it was music all over, and they were maybe told to offensive, defensive shift. So the panel penalized them quite a bit for that. And if they had not been penalized for that, then they would have been in the finals, no problem. Would have been a third, second, third going to finals. So they were very, they're very upset about that, obviously, but coach said, just come back, you have states, come back and show what you got in the states, and they did. So kudos to them for doing it. And Mr. Resnick's not here, so we can move on.
Questions for Mr. Molnar? I have one question. How many students write for the Tony Morris? Do you have any idea how many overall students there are in that program? Really don't, I really don't.
I can kind of answer it. You talking about here?
Not here, overall. I mean, you know, how many people throughout the community? Yeah, the county, because it's a whole county-wide thing. How many submissions do they get? Do you have any of them? I was just curious about that, because I would assume that there's a lot, because we had three submissions.
Well, we had more than three.
No, I'm just saying, we had, we had more than that, so that was my thought process. You know, if everybody has six or eight or ten, it's a huge.
And I think it's kind of managed and run by the community foundation, which, which actually probably is beyond just a county, right? There could be other, other schools that you may be that are aware of that, unless it is only the right county.
I don't think it'd be beyond the county.
Is it only the right county?
Yeah, I think it's.
I think it'd be limited to the county. I was just curious about that. Any other questions for Michael? Sarah, you're passing all the way.
I'm passing straight to you, Mr. Engel. I love it. Straight to JVS.
If I'd known that, I had a whole lot more.
There's still time. There's still time.
Just a couple of things. The JVS has been very busy with, still on the manufacturing. I think if you follow the news at all and the social media content of the JVS, you'll see that last Friday, United States people here again, Congressman was here from that, Lada was here to see what was going on at the JVS because it has been talked about statewide. All of the exciting things that manufacturing has happened since manufacturing month last fall. So it was very well received. It continues to be at the focal point right now for the JVS. Those students are in high demand for the upcoming summer through many manufacturers from that perspective, inspect for their internships for the summer. So it'll be interesting to see. And also announced that twenty-three people may be honorable from the Empress Schools for the second semester, or second ninth grading period at the JVS. You can look those names up if you just read the documents that you get. I'm not going to read them all for you. We had a board retreat since meeting last night. It went very well. I think the focus for this year for the JVS will be to update their strategic planning in that perspective, because it hadn't been done, it was done about three years before COVID, and then everything that was, that happened during COVID kind of didn't happen. So they were behind on the goals that they had established, so I think that it will be a focus to invigorate that again with the new perspectives of what's happening. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you all have regarding the JVS. As we know, all of the spring competitions will be happening real soon. No questions? Board updates. Dr. Messer, I assume you have some things for us?
I have a formal report, because I thought Sarah would be here, but just to piggyback off of Ms. Amy and just, you know, parents as well, please, you know, if you can talk with our, you know, two local legislators as well and share any stories you feel comfortable with about, you know, how, you know, just to advocate for our public school districts and how school has been great, hopefully, for your, for your students and, you know, we, in the Ohio Constitution, we do have, you know, what the state's, the state is supposed to partner with local school districts for a common system of education. And according to the fair school funding plan and the work group that I've been able to sit on some of their sessions, you know, the state is not fulfilling their, their partnership. So the next, the final two years of the phase N has us sitting at thirty-six percent, I mean, this year, and then in the next school year, it'll be about thirty-two percent. So my math mind, that's less than fifty percent. So we are asking, you know, people to speak with our local legislators and, you know, just fight for our public school district and, you know, have our people accountable to the constitution and fund our schools like we're supposed to, so.
That's it.
Questions? Comments?
Huh?
Or maybe you can add something else.
Where, besides vouchers, where is that money being used to?
Wow, I'm so glad you asked. I did provide for each of you an analysis from the Ohio Education Policy, referred to his OEPi. Dr. Howard Pleader is, I'm sure you've heard him speak, Dr. Messer, very, very bright individual, and he is the individual, his OEPi organization is the organization that our professional organizations, that's BASSA, OSBA, and OASBO, all look to, to interpret these budgets and what it means. And I don't think that, oh, we don't have the slides up or anything like that, I have those saved for March, but there is a reduction, without a doubt, in, of a hundred and three million dollars so far. And again, this is going to change. Dr. Messer and I were just sidebaring over here. It's a long trip, it's a long road between now and the end of June. I mean, so the governor does his executive budget, that's early February, now the House has already countered that original budget, then it's going to go to the Senate, and then it's going to go back to the governor, and it volleys around until about June twenty ninth, we have an answer about what our funding is. Now, who can tell me what the problem is, knowing what our state funding is going to be in the end of June? I don't. The five-year forecast is due at the end of May, so we're kind of flying blind. And in producing the five-year forecast, line one oh three five unrestricted and line one oh four restricted is, is really, it's an estimate, it's a, it's a guesstimate, right? So it appears that vouchers are increasing many, many, many millions of dollars to the tune of twenty, two hundred and fifty million plus, community and STEM school funding also increasing, JV, SDs also increasing more than what the decreases are from public education. And then the separate and apart from the funding formula, the fair school funding formula, are the add-ons, and those add-ons are considered, like some of the special ed funding, like transportation funding, typically some of the things that economic disadvantaged funding, gifted funding, the basic wellness base cost is outside of the formula as far as I understand. But I'll say what the, one of the most, one of the worst difficulties is, is Mr. Molnar and I noticed this today, is that there are multiple simulations moving around the state right now. And I'll say that they all need a decrease in funding for hamper since after build school district, but there's differences from one simulation to another. So that, that's part of the difficulty with trying to discern what our funding is going to be for fiscal twenty-six and fiscal twenty-seven. Dr. Messer, you attended a meeting today. Do you want to?
Yeah, so basically, they're asking for the inputs into the formula, like the gifted and education and transportation, and I believe there's two other inputs that escaped me right now, but they're asking for those to be updated so that, you know, we don't have these huge, yeah, they're actually doing, but they're, you know, asking for.
So what that means is that the costs to educate a student are stuck, they're frozen in the fair school funding plan formula at fiscal twenty-two. So that's four years ago. It costs more to educate a student now than it did four years ago, for all reasons. Look at inflation, I mean, what inflation has done to Ohio's checkbooks. Well, it does the same thing and more to a school district, you know? So if they can update what the base costs are to a more current year, that would definitely help the funding. But there is definitely movement, no matter, no matter how you, you shake it out, there's a movement in Columbus that is very detrimental to the funding of public education. I don't probably need to be any more political than that. So.
Other questions for Amanda or Amy in regards to some funding concerns? I think we all need to keep that in the back of our minds, because when, if we're going to lose millions and millions of dollars, we are going to have to address that somehow. So as board members, we need to kind of think about, how are we going to do that? I mean, it's going to be, we're going to have to reduce some things, or we're going to have to ask for more money, and then if that doesn't happen, what are we going to do? So I would advise the administration and come up with a plan so that when we get to June, we have some recommendations or some ideas that we've bounced around from each other and have that discussion, so that we're not trying to rapidly put something together that's going to have to go into effect probably by January of next year. So I would just ask you all to do that and keep that in your thought process we move forward here in the next three or four, five months, okay?
Yes, I'm asking to, that's parents, but community members advocate as well, because local, you know, districts are, which includes everybody in the district, whether you have students or not, you know, the burden is coming back on us if the state is not, you know, holding up their end of the bargain pain. So this is what keeps me up at night, but yes, that we, we all need to, you know, put up those halls and things like that.
And it could even be worse than this, depending on what the federal government does.
Well, don't have that question.
Well, I'm just saying, because some of that money from the federal government comes to the states.
Yes, sir.
So all I'm saying is, this we know is just what the state's planning to do, so we have no idea what the federal government is planning to do.
That, that is from, that was part of Mr. Molnar's, in my conversation around lunchtime today, was we don't know, we do not yet know what our allocations are going to be for our federal consolidated grants, and that's our six B, students, IDEA, Title II A, our Title I, and Title I has been growing, I probably shouldn't say that aloud, but our Title I allocation has been growing in the last couple of years. So we have no idea what's going to happen when the depart, you know, the federal government determines what they're going to be giving to the states. It all rolls, you know, downhill. Unfortunately, we still have, are waiting with beta breath for another four months. And what that means is that any of our grants that we pay salaries out of, special education, Title I, II, III, IV, that's going to need those expenditures moved to the general fund. So these are, these are all things that, you know, I could go on for hours, but you don't want me to, right? There, there are so many unknowns.
There's a lot of unknowns.
And we are starting the forecasting process.
And as, as you look at those unknowns, it could be a dark fiction.
It could be.
So I think that that's what we need to keep in mind, okay? For all the great things that are happening in the Empress Schools, the underlying could be really dark from that perspective, just because we don't have control over it. You know, it's handed to us, and then we have to make decisions. And I think that everyone needs to make sure that everybody in the entire community, as well as the staff, understands that. It's not coming from the Board of Education, it's coming down to us from way up top, okay? All right. Other questions?
Yeah, just a question.
Yeah, a lot of questions tonight.
With that being said.
That's what you tell me all the time.
Our, our tax policy with Dave, where do we stand on that? I think it's, I think with, in light of stuff, we should get on that.
That's true. Well, I would ask the question of this board, you know, we spent a lot of time on reviewing that tax policy. We, we reviewed, or we all have the opportunity to review what he gave to us. And I personally don't feel that what he gave to us had any substance to it whatsoever. There was no direct, there was no directives in it at all. It was, you could do this, you could do this, you could do this, you could do this. So, I don't, I personally don't feel that what we got was what I was looking for. Now, maybe you, the rest of you don't feel that way, but I'm just telling you how I feel.
I feel like he was just frustrated with us, that he gave us so much information and expected us to take it and go. And we were sitting there like, no, you're gonna do it, he was like, no, I taught this to you, now you have to do it. And then we were like, can you give us like a rough draft? And then he gave us a rough draft.
Right.
So now we have to make a decision.
And also, I think, I think everybody needs to understand that there's only a handful of districts in the state of Ohio that have a taxation policy. And it, and the, he did provide us a rough draft of what ours could look like. And there are no directives, there are a lot of um, like, basic assumptions. Almost like the way we do a five-year forecast, we have the numbers and then we have assumptions. The meat is really what's what we write about in the assumptions. Um, and and I feel like um, it's not something that we have to do. If you all want to, that is your prerogative. You are the Board of Education, you make those oversight directional um, decisions for the district. Um, but it did not give you a roadmap in any way. Um, there were certain things that I think Mr. Conley led us to, and that's up to the board to decide whether that's what the board wants to pursue. For, for instance, a school district income tax. He seemed to be persistent about the idea of having school district income tax. Um, I think that one of the most valuable things that he spoke to all of us about was preserving the twenty-first floor. And I, I do think that we all have much better understanding of what the twenty-first floor is. And understand with twenty twenty-four reappraisal increases, it's the first time we've bent the floor, below the floor. So, we don't have to do it, it's up to the board whether we pursue it. Um, and we might want more meat in it, so that it really means something. It, it doesn't, to me, feel like it means much of anything, it felt kind of ambiguous and is that what you were thinking, Mr. Engel? It felt to your hand.
It's exactly what I was feeling. And I, and I also, I'll publicly state, but I don't think that we need a tax policy. Because I think it binds the board in ways that we don't want, we wouldn't want any board to be bound to as we move forward. Because I think that whatever, who's sitting, whoever sits in these seats should be able to make the decisions that they need to make at the time that's what's going on in the world, in the community. And I don't think they should be bound to a policy that we think is the best. And have, being the most senior on this board, I think when I came on this board, this district was in very much dire straits. Okay? And if we couldn't have done the things that we had to do, because we were tied to some things, we would have had to have done a whole lot of things a whole lot differently than we had, than we did to make it successful. So I personally don't think, and I'm just, don't think that we need a taxation policy. There's only five school districts in the state of Ohio, I believe, that have a tax policy out of, how many hundreds are there?
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Six hundred, I was gonna say five hundred and ninety, and I didn't know whether that was right or not. But I just think that, I personally, if you want to pursue that, that's perfectly fine, if you choose to go that route, I would vote no. Just so you know, I'm telling you where I stand, right up front before you make that decision.
And I would say, I felt we also didn't need it, but not for that reason. My reason was, we're gonna go through all this, and then if the next board decides, let's change this policy, they're gonna change the policy, so what, like,
Right, so why?
At this point, we can just have the information, make decisions, and when the next group comes in, they will do the exact same thing. Like, it's good that we have the information, I think if there was a way that we could make a policy that just said, whoever's on the board needs to go through these classes so that they know what they're talking about, great, let's do that. But I don't think beyond that, we can.
I definitely learned a lot.
Make, yeah, absolutely.
I think it was a great exercise, but I don't, I don't.
I think it was a good thing for us, and that now we have all that information ahead, and we can just move forward.
Well, just to be clear, I'm not advocating for it or against it, I'm just asking a question, if we're not gonna do it, then we need to put it to rest. If we are gonna do it, then we need to take the next step, that's all.
I feel like it's kind of resting.
Well, do we, do we have a consensus that we don't want to move forward? You would agree that we don't have a consensus?
No, we have.
Or have a consensus?
Yeah, we don't.
So we have a consensus that at this point in time, we're not going to pursue going forward? Do you want that in the form of a motion, Madam Secretary, so that we know that this, if ever comes back, I think would be in the best interest?
Sure, who would like to make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Also, what's the motion, so I can write it down?
That we're not being, that we're not gonna pursue it, we don't.
Move forward with our tax policy.
Tax policy.
We don't even have a thing.
We don't need to table, let's just vote on it, because if it comes back, because then we'd have to bring it back to the table and we would, and, you know, we could table indefinitely, and then if somebody's not here, they wouldn't even know what was tabled. So I would just say we just vote on it, and then if it comes back up again, we start over. So, is there any other discussion on that matter? Do you have some questions?
No.
Teresa?
I'm good.
They've laid out there for how many, how many months?
Well, I was gonna say, we, we started that back in August. Right. You know, so I think that, you know, I think that was a valid point, that we needed to have that discussion, and we had it, so.
I, I just think in itself, I think it's a good thing to have in some fashion, but to your point, I think we are, what do you want, what's the expression, hogtying or, the, the future people that sits here? Because we don't know in five years, ten years, twenty years, what this economy will look like, or what this district will look like. So, I think we need to have that open, or they need to have that open ability to change as we pursue the years to come.
And, and, and they won't have to change the policy, they can just do what they do.
Do what they do.
They can just take action. Right. Before they take the act, otherwise, they have to change the policy to take the action.
Shouldn't think of the handbook with all the information we have, so we just pass that down.
But it might change.
Between the four steps, we'll change.
Well, the, the overall, you never know. Any other discussion or comments on the motion on the floor? Madam, would you, Secretary, would you please read the motion one more time?
That the board will not pursue the creation of taxation policy for the district.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Watcote.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. What other board updates do we have this evening? Why, huh?
I have no.
Do you have a couple more, I think?
I do not.
I have a couple questions. Uh, I was, I just wanted, I don't, I don't, I don't understand. I don't recall having a discussion about the concrete that was placed on the south end of the Powers parking lot. Is that a sidewalk, is it parking spaces, what is that? And are those parking spaces going north and south, or are they going east and west?
They're going to be diagonals, open spaces, right, Mr. Molnar? That's what Mr. Berman has, has said, yes.
And how are we paying for that?
We already paid for it.
Okay, okay, so we had the funds to do that, because I don't ever recall seeing anything about that. Maybe I missed a meeting or two, but I don't recall ever seeing a proposal about expanding that parking.
I don't believe there was discussion about it, but parking is a premium. And, you know, you come to the office for meetings with.
I'm, I understand that, but I just wanted to know, was the expense something that administration could do without our approval?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to make sure of.
Because it is now seventy-five plus thousand dollars.
I just wanted to make sure that there was not
That was the.
Approval and needed from the Board of Education to make that improvement without us knowing.
Well, it wasn't expensive.
I can get that for you.
And when will they be operable, because right now they're covered in snow.
Well, they need to be striped, they need to be striped. So as soon as the weather breaks, Mr. Berman said that, uh, they would have those striped and, um, be in use at that point.
And.
Can I ask if they're on Thursday, will they be striped?
No, I guarantee it.
Is there a barrier, is there still now a barrier between those parking spaces and the home and the land of the, the homeowner's land? Is there a space there, or is it now that but right up to their lawns? Because I, I can see a potential problem there from that perspective, because there was always a buffer, so the, the mud that was there was on our property, but now, will that be on their property from that perspective? That's my question, because we need to be prepared to address that if that's going to be an issue.
I don't know exactly where the property line is, if we can check in, is that how we feed that?
Right, I think we need to know if there's a buffer there, that we still own some space between that and the, the landowners.
Is there like a big rock or something stopping? I don't know, I just felt like I heard Chuck say that there's some, some kind of barrier, there's a lot of rocks.
Well, I mean, I walk that a lot, so that's why I just, you know, wondered what was going on there. And I've walked a whole lot more the last couple of weeks, because the sidewalks aren't walkable. So, this past weekend, I thought, what is this? Because I couldn't tell, because it was covered up with snow still, so that's why I thought I would ask that question tonight. Okay, anyone else have anything they'd like to bring up? No? Might as well bring up what's on your mind, so you get an answer. All right, then we move up to, on to item eleven, personal recommendations.
Here we have personal recommendations, they are all routine this evening, uh, new hires, um, some resignations and some retirements and some different changes like that. Um, I will point out, uh, item A, Suzanne Carlo, our former specialist in the Treasuries Office, is retiring. Effective March thirty first, so we'll have one more month left with Suzanne. I also wanted to point out, of course the board is aware, um, North Principal Ashley Harrigan is made a request to go into teaching ranks. Um, and she will be our new math and instructional coach, and so we have internally posted the North Principal position. Uh, those interviews will take place this week, and we'll see what the next steps are. I think those are on Wednesday, so that'll be the next step for the North Principal position. Again, all them, all the rest of the items are routine, quite a few, um, unpaid leave or paternity leave, so that's kind of exciting. Uh, and so, I'd like the board to approve personnel items eleven A through eleven M.
Second. We have a motion in a second on the floor for personal items eleven A through M, discussion or comments?
Um, I'll ask this question, you can tell me if it's, um, I guess, answerable or not. Um, is there a good number of candidates for interviewers?
Yes, we have multiple candidates.
You've got four or three to say, isn't it?
Any other questions pertaining to these items? If not, call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Watcote.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Item twelve would be the educational recommendations.
There are just five educational recommendations, they're all routine, but I would point out, item C is, uh, a memorandum of understanding for College Credit Plus for the Ohio Community College, that's the agreement we do every year, I think last month we did L C C C. So this month we have Tri Cs on there as well. Also, the board can see in item D, there's a couple trips that are gonna be happening. The A J H Washington DC trip for, um, next fall. And also, the theater group is going to a state testing conference in Columbus, so it's exciting for them. So I'd like to recommend items, uh, twelve A through twelve E.
Motion in a second for educational recommendations twelve A through E, questions or comments? I do have one question. Um, on the Kaihoga Community College, what are the top subjects that they would go there for versus community college?
Um, I'd have to check in that, we don't have many that tend Tri C, I mean, I don't think there's any specific, like, one specific course or class that, you know, everyone goes to Tri C for. I just think we have a, a certain number of students that, you know, we have to have an agreement with Tri C. But kids, did you, are you aware of how many by chance?
The last time I looked, there were, um, you have three enrollments versus the three classes of, um, with Tri C.
And they were just for normal things that they could have gotten at community college?
And Tri C is also community college.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, but they must like.
Yes, yep.
Kaihoga better than they like Lorain County Community College, for some reason.
Three, three different students, or once, two, or three classes?
Three different students.
Three different students.
I just thought maybe they went there because they couldn't get a biology course at here, but they could get it there, or they could get a chemistry course or something. I was just curious as to what, what was the attraction for going to Kaihoga Community College?
We get reports from, um, from all of our C C partners, we have teachers at Cleveland State, uh, as well, so we can, um, we can have, we can really have that in a form of a, an invoice that we can, we can issue an expiration.
Well, that, that was my, that was my, one of my thought processes, because I know that a lot of people, community college, Lorain County Community College, gets that course through Woolley Green, or through Cleveland State, or through, uh, a, a partner school or college.
Mrs. Hall, do you know, students go onsite at Kaihoga County?
It depends, um, it depends on the course, um, I'd have to look back at those three students. And that was actually, I don't recall, but we, I think we just have the M U in place, I don't even know that we have an annual currently. And just the M U in case we do ask for some students.
Great. That was, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Watcote. Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. Item thirteen would be business recommendations.
Yeah, we have several routine items, just want to point out, item B, we, we did this in the fall, where we passed a resolution for the Ohio Facility Construction Commission for their expanded local partnership program. Uh, this is just an update, they want us to update a few, a few dates of when we might do a project. Again, we're not bound to anything at all, but by moving the date, re, reapproving this resolution, uh, that will kind of jumpstart us to have the enrollment study, if you'd like, packed up by the end of the school year. So, that's why that's on here as well. Also, item C is the C T Taylor G N P that we looked at with our guests this evening. Um, oh, and item G, which I didn't mention earlier when Mr. Watts was here, but item G is the actual quotes for the theater lighting and the theater sound, and Hannah Dugle did a wonderful job, and we, she got us, uh, a quote from who we're approving tonight. And then Amy and I went back and said, we actually, because it's costs of over a hundred thousand dollars, we need three quotes. So she, she scrambled out four quotes and brought them in, and then through two more iterations of, uh, the quotes, it got lower every time. So, so it's a win for the theater group, so I'm glad that the board's gonna approve that tonight. We will have purchase orders in place tomorrow, so we can contact the banners, because our hope is, we might be able to get the lighting and sound in before the spring musical. So I'd like to approve items, um, thirteen A through thirteen G.
Motion in a second for the business recommendations, questions or comments?
I have a couple questions.
Absolutely, man.
So, what?
We're C.
On A, are we making any, are we making any headway on replacing Mercy?
Um, not yet. I mean, it's, it's in pro, it's a process for the work on, but.
Well, I'm gonna say with listening tonight, with everything that's gonna go on in that stadium, I, I don't, I don't know if you'll get a better opportunity to find
Correct.
Somebody with, everything's new, so.
I contacted a few businesses and I've reached out to one, um, you know, right now, we're, we're working with U H for our services at the stadium.
I mean.
Yeah, no, 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 so that would, that would be the first focus, but then after that, honestly, we're not being interested in other medical facilities because of, uh, the two competition and the two.
Right.
So I'm looking probably outside of the system as well.
Okay, and then the other question on F, K V, is that, one, is that new? And two, why would go a two-year contract with them?
Um, I did not discuss that with Chuck, he submitted that agenda, but I could find out. Are you aware of? And are you aware of?
I did not talk with Mr. Berman about that.
Are they new this year?
Yes, I think.
I don't remember seeing them.
I think we use urban for, yeah, we use urban. So I could check.
And Urban's not doing landscaping anymore.
What is that?
They're not doing landscaping.
No, I I just didn't, I I I just don't.
Yeah, I was, I was curious why we didn't go with somebody local too, I I I thought the same thing.
Yeah, and then like say being a two-year contract versus normally they all have been one.
Should we table?
I will give it, yeah, you want? To table until we have more information or you have to do that?
But let's wait.
We don't need to table, let's just remove it.
Yeah.
It's easier to remove it from the agenda than it is to table it. Correct, Madam?
Sure.
Okay, so we are just, we are omitting F.
So I'll make a motion.
So we have to amend the motion to do that. So if you just amend your motion.
I'll amend that motion.
Amen.
Right, so the motion has been amended and approved by the same people.
Alright, so the motion was to approve items thirteen A through thirteen E and thirteen G.
Okay, um, I have a question. I'm just curious as to, does each building have a separate contract for the elevators? Because the elevator on here is strictly for Powers. So what about the elevators for here and the elevators in other buildings? Why are the elevator contracts not one contract?
I I think that AJH is Tyson Pro.
There are different, there are different service providers for the elevators?
And I know it has different.
And so then my question would be, why is that?
There's people that are.
Or the builder.
They they may be different manufacturers like Dr. Messer just said.
Because college was put in.
We can look into that.
But but typically, Otis will service almost anybody's elevator or Schindler would service almost anybody's elevator. I I I just think that's something that there's possible potential savings there because if they're only serving one elevator, uh, I was, I would suggest that we look at that, combining those from that perspective. Because like, is this a one-year service contract, is it multiple-year service contract? So I think we should look at all of the elevator contracts and see if we could combine them so that it could be a savings for the district if we can find a person who will service all the type of elevators that we have.
So you want to remove this too?
We, well, I, I don't.
Well, might as well.
We can remove it.
About that before we take it out though, a question for you. So you know how Powers is like a different, um, like a different pot of money or something because of the whole.
The maintenance fund.
Yeah, does that?
The maintenance funds can be used on both AJH and Powers.
So they're the same.
They're the same.
Yeah, okay.
So so then I would ask that we explore that. Because, I mean, I don't know what the date on this contract is, I looked at it, but I don't recall the date from like now.
Do you want me to remove it? Do you want me to amend my motion again?
I would like to.
You're gonna take off, what is that, E?
E.
E and.
So we're removing E and I second E, remove E.
Another friendly.
Okay. So now.
Do you have any other questions?
How many do you like? Twenty.
No, I'm just saying. Um, business recommendations, we are now going to vote on A, B, C, D, and G with the amended motion.
Yes, Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels. Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Ah, motion passed. I do not believe that there's any need to go into executive session this evening. So with that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the table for adjournment, is there a discussion?
Do you have any questions on that?
Alright.
No.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa. Mr. Engel.
Hi.